Hello, hello. Good evening, Portland, and welcome, everyone, to the fifth of nine public hearings hosted by the Independent District Commission, seeking your input on the draft district plan. My name is Josh Florenti, he/him. I have the privilege of co-chairing this last phase of the commission’s work alongside fellow Commissioner and co-chair Duane Judd. Before I hand things over to our moderator to get things started this evening, I just first want to thank you all for making time to be here today. This is truly a historic moment for all of our communities to improve representation at City Hall, and this districting process does not happen without you. So, thank you all for making time to be here this evening. There are snacks and refreshments at the table there behind you, so please take what you need to be comfortable, and I will hand things over to our moderator to get us started.
Wonderful. Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. My name is Jamie, and I will be your moderator tonight. Before I kind of give you more information about what you can expect today, I want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to fully participate. So, there are some things that you should know. First, this meeting is being recorded, and the recording will be posted online. So, that means if you miss anything that’s said tonight, if you would like to pass this along to your friends and family to help spread the word, you’ll be able to find the recording at portland.gov/transition/districtcommission. We also have American Sign Language and Spanish interpretation available today. If you would like to access these services, please see the folks at the sign-in table right over there where you came in, and they will help you connect. And if you haven’t done so already, if you came here to testify, you should also sign in at that table, and that will get you into the queue, and I will call you in order of the queue. If time allows, after all the public testimony is over, there may be opportunity for additional questions. We’ll have to see how it goes at the end. If you do not want to testify in person today, I want you to know there are other ways in which you can provide your public comment. You can submit a public comment simply by emailing the district commission at districtcommission@portlandoregon.gov. You can call 311 and give verbal testimony over the phone, and I believe they will take verbal testimony in multiple languages. You can fill out a public comment card, so you can write something out, and you’ll find them over at the entry table as well. There’s also an online survey on the website at portland.gov/transition/districtcommission. Or, finally, you can send us a letter by the good old-fashioned postal service, send to Office of Management and Finance, Care of Independent District Commission, 1120 Southwest Fifth Avenue, Portland, 97204. The public comment period closes on Saturday, July 22nd, so no matter what form you take, please do it before that date. Okay, if we haven’t made it clear now, but I’m going to wrap up this intro and give you a bit of an agenda for what you can expect. For our time together today, the independent district commissioners will start with an educational presentation to give you an overview of the proposal as it currently stands. Then, we will go right into public testimony for anyone here who wants to testify, and then we will conclude our evening with some closing remarks before adjourning and let you go on with your evening. So, I will now pass it over to our independent district commissioners for the educational presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, and hello, everyone. Welcome to the Independent District Commission Public Hearing on a Draft District Plan. My name is Paul Lumley, and I’m a commissioner, along with all my fellow commissioners here at the table, as well as Commissioner Marta Hanson, who will be co-leading the meeting with me today. On behalf of the Independent District Commission, we want to take this moment to thank you for being here tonight, to share with us your opinions on the district plan. Before we hear from you, we’re going to present a short educational presentation about the district commission’s work to date. Currently, all Portland—excuse me—currently, all of Portland’s elected officials can live anywhere in the city, and they’re elected by voters across the entire city. A new system was approved by voters in November 2022 in that election. Four geographic districts will be created, with three city councilors who reside in their district elected to represent each of those four districts. So, there will now be 12 district-based city councilors, rather than the current five-at-large councilors. The Independent District Commission was created by voter-approved amendments to the city charter. It was tasked with preparing and adopting the district plan or map for city council elections, starting with the election in November 2024. This primarily involves work with the community and professional experts to design the district map that will take place until the first redistricting cycle in the year 2030. The Independent District Commission consists of 13 voting members, as well as alternate and reserve alternate members. All of us were selected through an open, community-wide application process, appointed by the mayor, and confirmed by city council in January 2023. As the name suggests, the Independent District Commission is a fully independent community body authorized to create the district plan or map for the city of Portland. The district commission has a unique authority. If nine out of the 13 voting commissioners approve the plan, then it is adopted and final. If that fails, there would be a second vote. And if, however, after the two votes, the district commission can’t reach the nine-vote supermajority, then most—then the most recent version of the plan is referred to the city or map for the city council for its consideration and adoption. The Independent District Commission prepares the district map—excuse me—as the Independent District Commission prepares the district map, we are guided by the voter-approved charter requirements and state and federal district—districting laws. We must use the voter-approved district criteria and any additional criteria we set forth. We are required to hold nine public hearings. One public hearing was held early in the process before we developed the district plan, to seek public comment on whether any additional planned criteria should be considered. We voted not to add criteria to those specified in the adopted charter measure. Eight public hearings must be held, two in each of the proposed districts, before we vote on the adopted district plan. The draft district plan was made available to the community one month before the first of those eight public hearings takes place on July 5th, and we can’t vote on the plan until one month after the last public hearing, which takes place on July 16. We’re actually holding nine public hearings, because one Zoom meeting was added to provide addition—excuse me—to provide more opportunities for widespread community input beyond what we elicit in the public—in the in-person public hearings across the city. The commission must adopt its district plan or map by no later than September 1, 2023. We have received questions from the community members about whether we can take more time, but the timeline was established in the voter-approved measure. These next few slides are somewhat technical, and we are sharing this so you have a broad understanding of what guides our work. Creating initial districts and subsequent redistricting once a decade are processes controlled by two federal laws, the Equal Protection Clause and the Voting Rights Act. Under the Equal Protection Clause, the creation of initial districts and the periodic updating of districts must be substantially equal in population. This requires a known—this requirement is known as “one person, one vote.” The primary tool in using—the primary tool used in the redistricting process is the federal census. The U.S. Constitution mandates a census every 10 years to count every resident in the United States. The census includes basic demographic data, including total population by age, race, housing, and housing occupancy. Because the district population shifts over time, district boundaries must be redrawn after the census is administered every 10 years, to ensure that each person’s vote remains equally weighted. We have received questions from the community members, asking us to consider how population in the city might shift in the future, but we must work with data from the 2020 census and leave that to the next redistricting in 2030. The Voting Rights Act of 1965 requires districts that do not discriminate on the basis of race, color, or membership in a protected language minority group. Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act prohibits redistricting plans that are intended to be racially discriminatory and are—and that are shown to have racially discriminatory The commission is required to create a districting plan using the voter-approved district criteria. As shared earlier, the commission decided not to add criteria to those already approved. The voter-approved district criteria requires that the district commission ensure that each district, as nearly as practicable as possible, be contiguous and compact, meaning that each district is one geographically connected piece without an unconnected element. The smallest element that we are working with to design maps is a census block. Utilizing existing geographic and political boundaries. This means natural and man-made boundaries, such as highways, mountains, and rivers, which already often divide communities and make innate borders. Or political boundaries, like legislative, county, or school districts. Not divide communities of common interest. Communities of interest are recognized by academics and jurisdictions throughout the country as groups that share a common policy concern and would benefit from being redistricted—excuse me—would benefit from being distred together. Dividing a community of interest often leads to a decreased ability to advocate for their community’s needs and priorities. Is connected by transportation links, meaning highways, roads, streets, and public transportation, and is of equal population, meaning that each district has the same number of people. The commission is working to create a district plan with less than 5% deviation in population between districts. The district commission must also ensure no district will be drawn for the purpose of favoring any political party, incumbent elected official, or other person, and diluting the voting strength of any language or ethnic minority group. The criteria described in the charter are similar to what has been upheld in federal courts regarding the formation of political districts across the country. In creating each district, data is used to define the criteria. On the screen, you can see examples of some data sets that can help define district criteria. Some criteria require us using specific data sets. For example, the population of any Voting Rights Act-related issues must be the data released in the 2020 decennial census and the most recent American Community Survey. The American Community Survey is an annual survey at a smaller scale than the census that can—ply—that compiles additional demographic and socioeconomic community data. Some data sets can be used to help define multiple criteria. For example, school district boundaries or high school enrollment areas can be considered an existing political boundary or a community of common interest, because it—is quality and effectiveness is a shared concern. The criteria regarding communities of common interest is where we most want community input from all of you. You know how you define your community by your shared experiences and concerns. We want to hear about those. The district commission has been working with the technical districting consultants to gather different data sets to help from—inform the district criteria. The data sets you see on the screen are not representative of all the data the commission has been using. Others include socioeconomic status like household income, voter precincts, public transportation routes, homeownership in renters, and access to public goods and services, and much more. The district commission is committed to ensuring the districting process is transparent and community-driven. Portlanders have engaged in a variety of ways to inform creation of the draft maps. We’ve already received over three and a half hours of public testimony, hundreds of public comments, and almost 200 draft map options submitted by members of the public through the online mapping tool. Commissioners also attended community-led districting events, held individual meetings with community leaders, and spent hours reflecting on what we’ve heard. The commission has made a deliberate effort to center the voices of those who have not historically been part of decision-making. With that background, about the independent district commission’s work, process, and a little detail about districting, I’m going to turn things over to Commissioner Hanson to talk about our draft maps.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Lumley. Jamie, are you the one with the clicker? Sweet, all right. I’m going to say next slide for you. Thank you. Hi, everyone. I am Commissioner Marta Hanson, thrilled to be here with you this evening. Thanks for being with us. So, you heard the overview from Commissioner Lumley about the criteria that we have been considering and the different data sets we’ve been looking at, and I’ll take a few minutes now to walk through the three draft maps that we released on June 1st. So, as Commissioner Lumley said, the three draft maps were really based on two distinct things. One is the district criteria that the voters, all of you, approved last November, and the second piece was all of the community input that we received up until the date we had to vote on these maps. So, we really took both the criteria and also community input into consideration. So, as you look at the three, which we named Alder, Cedar, and Maples to distinguish among the three, they have some characteristics that are similar across the three. So, I’ll walk through the similarities and then the differences, and then I’ll go through each map individually. So, first, you will notice that the maps share a couple of following characteristics. First, all communities east of I-205 are in the same district. That district also includes all four non-Portland Public School school districts, so that’s Park Rose, David Douglas, Reynolds, and Centennial. The western border of the easternmost district runs along I-205 and 82nd to preserve both Jade District interests and the Lentz neighborhood. In addition, you’ll notice in the yellow section at the top that neighborhoods along the northern part of Portland are all in a single district together, with the exception of that piece in the Park Rose neighborhood, which is like the northern part of the eastern district. But other than that, neighborhoods in northern Portland are all together. And that includes the north and south sides of Columbia Boulevard being in the same district. In the map, all three maps, Historic Albina in north-northeast Portland is preserved in a single district, and all communities west of the Willamette River are in a single district. So, that’s what’s consistent across all three. The maps also then reflect alternative choices and trade-offs. So, which—with all of these criteria, it’s really a matter of weighing them against each other, and sometimes you have to make a decision one way or another. So, they demonstrate different decisions. So, the west side of the Willamette River, population-wise, is about 20,000 people short of being a quarter of the city’s population. So, any district that includes the entire west side of the river must also include about 20,000 people from somewhere on the east side of the river. So, in the Alder map, that western district crosses in the lower southeast to include the neighborhoods of Selwood, Westmoreland, Eastmoreland, and Reed. In the Cedar map, it crosses along the inner east side to include the central eastside Industrial Council district, parts of the Buckman neighborhood, as well as the Brooklyn and Selwood neighborhoods, and these components share eight bridge connections across the river, as well as have bus and max line corridors. And then the Maple map crosses in the central east side, from I-84 South to Powell, to include parts of Buckman and Kearns and parts of Hossford-Abernathy as well. Another difference across the three is the eastern boundary between the north and northeast and the central southeast districts, so between the like yellow and teal districts. The Alder map primarily uses neighborhood organization boundaries, which is why it kind of looks like stepping stones there. The Cedar map alternatively uses Sandy Boulevard as a transit boundary, which then divides Hollywood, Rose City Park, and Roseway. And the Maple map uses a bit of both. Rose City Park is in one district, and Roseway is divided by Sandy into two. So, on the next slide, we will do a deep dive into the Alder map. So, and I’ll share a little bit about kind of the philosophy behind each of these maps and what led—the decision-making process that led to the map themselves. So, the Alder map is built around preserving established neighborhood boundaries. So, it divides the central city along three districts, using the Willamette River and I-84 as boundaries, and the intention here is to promote engagement across districts with central city issues and economic opportunities, as well as to distribute the significant assets and institutions in these areas across multiple districts. So, you’ve got like Omsi in one district, the Convention Center in another, and downtown in another. That’s what the Alder map does. In addition, here, neighborhoods in lower southeast, so that’s Selwood, Eastmoreland, et cetera, share a district with the demographically and socio-economically similar communities on the west side of the river, and are connected by both the Selwood and the Ross Island Bridge. So, that’s Alder. On the next slide, we’ve got Cedar, and the Cedar map boundaries are built around the philosophy of preserving transit corridors. So, the guiding philosophy here is that Portlanders intuitively know these transit corridors, and these transit corridors can be a way to prioritize accessible transit in bringing communities together. So, in this map, it uses northeast Sandy, southeast 12th, and 82nd, and max lines as some of those transit corridors, which then does divide some of the neighborhoods, right? Because we’re prioritizing transit corridors here. So, parts of the central east side, Brooklyn and Selwood, are in the west district, again that shares those eight bridge connections back and forth, and has both bus and max corridors to the east. And last but not least is the Maple map. And the Maple map is built around keeping much of the central city together, with the exception of Lloyd, the western part of which is part of that Historic Albina neighborhood that we decided to keep together up at the—or that we heard feedback to keep together up at the top. And so, the Maple map is built around keeping the central city together as per the Central City 2035 plan, which includes also several additional eastside neighborhoods. And the rationale here is that the central city includes the city—most of the city’s most densely populated and urbanized neighborhoods, where residential and commercial interests are tightly interwoven. And so, here, eastside neighborhoods with a high percentage of renters, places like Buckman, Kearns, et cetera, share a district with westside renter-heavy neighborhoods like Goose Hollow, Old Town, South Waterfront, et cetera, as well as other westside neighborhoods. So, those are the maps. And on the next slide, we have questions. We’ve got questions that we want to hear from you. As you have heard, the IDC—we as a commission—are deeply committed to ensuring that the final plan that we produce is reflective of the priorities of Portlanders of all backgrounds, with a specific focus on creating an equitable and inclusive process. So, now that these three draft maps have been released for public input, we are committed to engaging even more Portlanders to hear your feedback, opinions, questions, concerns, reactions. The numbers that Commissioner Lumley shared were from—as of May 30th, so you can imagine in the five or six weeks since then, those numbers have become much, much higher, which we are really grateful for and energized by. Because this community input is integral to us convening around a final district map in August. And we really think of this as a fundamental—or an opportunity for all of us collectively to fundamentally shape our city government for the better. The gravity of this task really cannot be understated. As you heard, these maps will be in place until after the 2030 census, when the next redistricting happens, and will also be used for city council elections in November of next year. So, it’s an exciting opportunity, and we’re grateful that y’all are here. It is our hope that these three maps prompt reactions and reflections, like truly the questions behind me, or what we want to hear from you, about how you most want to be represented in City Hall. So, while we know that some of what we presented today might be unfamiliar or technical, we do hope that this presentation gave you a better understanding of our work and how we got to where we are. And before we begin the public testimony, on the next slide, we’ve got the many ways that you can provide feedback, which you also heard from Jamie earlier. As was said, you can submit comments through July 22nd, and if after today you’ve got additional comments, or you want to share this info with any family or friends, please do so. We’ve got the Zoom hearing on Friday, and hearings every day till Sunday, so we hope to see lots of folks there. Yeah, comments can be submitted via online, via email, phone number, or sent to the mailing address. And that concludes our presentation, so I’ll pass it back to our fabulous moderator to open public testimony. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanson. It’s that time, y’all, what you all came here for. We’re now going to begin our public testimony. Before we begin, I do have a few things to go over with you, so bear with me. First of all, if you have not signed up, and you decided after that fabulous presentation that you would like to give some testimony, it is not too late. It is never too late. Please go see the lovely people at the sign-in table. They will get you in the queue. The queue’s going to pop up on my computer, and I could call you up in order. To ensure this is a welcoming space, whether you are testifying or not, we would appreciate if everyone here today would agree to follow some rules, some rules of conduct. So, disruptive conduct, such as interrupting somebody, or shouting out from your seats, or not concluding your testimony during the allocated time, or using foul language, will not be allowed. So, if there are any disruptions, a warning will be given, and a further warning may result in you being removed for the remainder of the meeting. That would be a terrible result, so let’s get along to get along. And thank you for helping your fellow Portlanders feel welcome, and making sure everyone has the opportunity to be heard. So, let me check the sign-in sheet and see how many people we have signed up to testify. It looks like we have seven people so far. Again, it’s not too late to sign up, so as people are testifying, if you are so moved to provide your comment, feel free to sign up. I’m going to call you in pairs of two, so that you can come up when your name is called or be prepared to be the next in line. You will each have three minutes to provide your testimony, and I’m going to keep track on my handy-dandy phone, and it will sound a very lovely little charm when your time is up. I have to tell you, at the last hearing, nobody heard this charming sound, because they were all so timely. Let’s see if the streak continues. So, when giving testimony, we ask that you please state your name, your ZIP code, or the neighborhood that you’re in, if you’d like. If you are testifying on behalf of an organization, we’d like to know that. And please identify which map you are testifying about. And lastly, we ask that you please remember to go slowly for our interpreters. Thank you. Okay, I’m going to start calling names. Let me switch back over. We are going to begin with Donell Stevens, followed by Pat Hanley. If I didn’t make it clear, sorry, the microphone is up here at the front. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. My name is Donell Stevens. I live in Selwood, Moreland. We are impacted by two of your maps, and I’ve lived there for 28 years. For a while, I lived in the houseboats down on the river, and now I live up in the area there. And I want to thank you. This is—I can’t even imagine doing this job. It’s got to have been a very difficult job, and appreciate your accessibility and your transparency with all the information, and helping us as a community work with you. I’m going to talk about the Alder map, and I’m going to say that I am totally in favor of the Alter map. And I think it is a very good idea to put our neighborhood over with the southwest and the northwest. And the reason is—a lot—there’s several reasons. One is the demographics. Both of us share small liberal arts colleges. You have Lewis and Clark and Reed. Both of us have sell houses for a million dollars, so we have similar interests that way. And we are voters. We vote. Selwood votes. Selwood is active. Selwood is politically active. And we vote—up to 75 to 80% of our people in our community vote. We will be watching as we join the west, and we will be paying attention, and we will be acting to make sure that the southwest and the northwest considers the populations in that area. I do not believe that the Maple map does that. The Maple map has a lot of apartments on 12th and 10th. You know, the canyons of apartments. Those people—I am an active get-out-the-vote person, and those apartments are very hard to get out the vote. I will look up the precincts, how those precincts have voted in the past, the percentage, and it’s low, I’m sure. It’s hard to get into the apartments. They’re locked, and they—it’s hard to get into them to get people to vote and to access voters. Selwood, we are voters, and we will pay attention to what’s happening, and we will be able to handle and work with the people in the west. So, I strongly support that, and I don’t think there’s anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Donell. Pat Hanley, followed by Chris Ikamp.
Yes, my name is Pat Hanley. I’m a lifer in Selwood. I grew up there, and the Willamette River is a dividing line that, for us, downtown is—I—that my personal opinion—is not compatible with our stuff. The bridge—the Selwood Bridge—I mean, 80, 75, 80% of it is Clackamas County users. So, is that—it has some kind of connection between the two. I don’t see it. The other thing—that there was 20,000 people, are we talking about? Why were all other three districts solid, and only southeast has to come— southeast has to come up with some people to be moved? Why couldn't there have been the Lloyd District available to move across the river? Or St. John's? That's it for me.
Thank you, Pat. Chris Ikamp, followed by Melanie Billings-John.
Hello? Whoa, that's loud. My name is Chris Ikamp. I am the Chair of the Haasford Avenue Neighborhood Association. I'm here testifying on my behalf, but in that role, I've talked to a lot of people in my neighborhood, and a lot of people in other neighborhoods in southeast, including in Selwood. And first, I just want to say thank you all for this. I know this is a hard, hard job, and someone's got to do it, and I'm glad it's you. So I just wanted to say, first of all, I am pretty dismayed that, what seems to me, the primary variable in all three of these maps that you put forth is the specifics, really, the main difference is the specifics of how you carve up southeast Portland, and the inner parts of Portland. I wish that you had taken a more expansive view about what's possible, and been a little bit more creative in the maps you advanced for discussion. I just feel like, you know, it's us getting chopped up one way or the other. One of the major emphases of charter reform is the need for equal representation for all residents. It is therefore crucial that our voting districts be thoughtfully designed in a way that promotes fair representation and minimizes any potential for disenfranchisement. The east side of Portland is culturally very different than the west side, and the residents have different issues and concerns. I believe that adding any small portion of the east side to a large west side district will effectively disenfranchise those east side voters. And therefore, I ask that you reject all three of these proposals, and draw a new set of districts that split the west side, creating multiple districts that balance east side and west side population. I am also concerned that two of the three proposals move forward, that you've moved forward, combine the city's most valuable assets, creating one district that has considerably more economic, political, commercial, and business power than the other districts. That said, if we could solve the imbalance with, and power differential between east and west, I could probably live with that shortcoming. There are some good areas of common interest that could be used to create east and west side districts. Linton and St. John's, for example, have a lot in common, both historically and economically, and they also wrestle with transportation issues that are similar, both in their isolation from the rest of the city, and in these major freight routes that move through and impact those communities. The neighbors of the Central East Side share the challenges of an active industrial-residential interface with several west side neighborhoods. And the mostly residential areas, such as East Moreland and Selwood, share many characteristics with comparable neighborhoods on the southwest, in southwest Portland. So I think it is possible to create districts that span the river, that capture common interests. By drawing districts that combine areas with similar development patterns and challenges, I believe the cultural differences between east and west could be minimized, and by creating balanced districts, any remaining differences could be disarmed. By defining districts in this manner, it may also be possible to better represent the very differing priorities of residents on the west side, who are not a monolith, who might themselves fear their concerns would be swamped by, say, a powerful downtown. So that might be another way to think about why you might want to split up the west side. I realize that the river seems like a natural line of division, but given Portland's, I'll be done in a second, given Portland's distribution of population, creating a single west side district with token east side representation disenfranchises whatever chunk of southeast Portland you grafted onto it. Please do not adopt any of these three maps. Rather, go back and try drawing the boundaries again to minimize the possibility of disenfranchising a portion of southeast population. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Melanie Billings-John, followed by Robert Rothery.
Hi, I'm Melanie Billings-John. I've spoken to you before on Zoom. It's nice to see you all in person. I grew up until college in Selwood, Moreland. I now live in the Southwest Hills, and I have some good news. We actually both speak the same language on both sides, and we're not that different. That aside, I want to talk to you today in support of the Alder Map. As you know, I was on the Charter Commission. And one of the things that we were thinking about when we drew the four districts was not only the importance of bringing out the minority vote, although that was the primary interest, we also felt that by developing four districts as opposed to, say, 12 smaller districts, we would create a greater sense of ownership of the whole city amongst these districts. I think it's really important, when we think about communities of common interest, to also bear in mind that Portland itself is a community of common interest. We should have a common interest in the success of our city, not just concerns with local priorities. I feel that only Alder fulfills that goal. I spent some time looking into the Portland Central City 2035 Plan. And just for everyone here, it really goes from the inner west side to southeast 12th, and from the Lloyd District and Pearl Districts down to Powell Boulevard. It's that section. It's a major development section where a lot of money is going to be going into the city. The Central City Plan defines itself as the primary guiding policy document for the central city, in which they're creating an urban core that is vibrant, innovative, sustainable, and resilient, and, in their words, "a place that every Portlander can be proud to call their own." The fact is that only Alder allows every Portlander to start calling that their own. In the Maple District, that whole business, except for the Lloyd side, moves into the west side. Same thing happens with the Cedar Map. In the Alder Map, some of that is owned by the southeast area, the north area, and the west area. So you have three districts that get advantage from that. Now, this is important from an electoral point of view. If you have city councilors that are voting to provide money for this central city plan, aren't you better off having nine councilors feeling that they are benefiting directly from this, and their people are benefiting, than having three or six? So that was important reason number one. Important reason number two was the just-announced $120 million OMSI District Plan that was just approved by Portland's Design Commission, quote, "A one-of-a-kind neighborhood that is an inclusive community destination with innovation, culture, arts, and science learning at its heart." That would, in both the Cedar and the Maple Plans, go into the west side. So I would say that that is not an inclusive district. It would be building 1,200 housing units, and one-third of the budget would come from public sources. So I'm going to say, aren't we better off with more councilors feeling that their districts are benefiting and supporting these citywide movements than fewer? Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Robert Rothery, followed by Vadim Masursky.
Hi there, my name is Robert Rothery. I live in the Roseway neighborhood. I recently bought a house in Roseway after having rented an apartment in the Concordia neighborhood for several years. First of all, thank all of you for your hard work. This must have been a vexing assignment. I did read very carefully the report that you put out when you announced these meetings, and looked at the maps, and looked at how they conform to the various criteria that you had to consider, and I think they do a really good job. I do appreciate and agree with using major corridors such as freeways in the river as major dividing lines. They divined the city pretty naturally. The maps all look pretty much like what I expected, and I also expected that the major comments that you would get would be about which part of the city on the east has to go with the west. And that sounds like tonight, that's what most people are concerned about. I have a different comment. I don't have any, I don't feel like I'm qualified to comment on which part of the city on the east should be part of the western district. But it looks to me like a big part of choosing how to divide the, I don't know what the districts are called, but the north and south, the northeast and southeast districts, is where to draw that line, and part of that is the reaction to what gets put with the west side. And that said, my reaction is that I think the Cedar is the worst plant. In all plans, I live right off Sandy Boulevard, in all three plans, I'm in the southeast district, so I am really affected by where the line draws. But I don't really have an opinion about which one is best, except to say that I don't think it's a good idea to use Sandy as a dividing line. There's a big difference between using a thoroughfare as a dividing line, as opposed to using a freeway. A freeway is like a river. It really separates neighborhoods. A thoroughfare serves both sides of that thoroughfare in a way that the river and freeway does not. It could well be that there would be a develop, and I see, also Sandy is a major, major development corridor. You mentioned that you're keeping both sides of Columbia Boulevard together. And I don't know why you've mentioned that, but you mentioned in the materials and in your presentation, and it seems to me that whatever that impulse is, would apply to Sandy as well. For example, there's going to be a major apartment development, just on the north side of Sandy, where the German-American society is, right behind that. It affects both sides of Sandy. If you draw the line there, you could have disparate opinions and representatives on the two sides with disparate views, and that could negatively affect the wishes of the people that are together affected by that development. It seems much more desirable to me to have both sides of Sandy in one district. And so for that reason, I think Cedar is the worst. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioner, my name is Vadim. I'm going to reserve my comments for later session. Thank you.
Vadim has decided to comment at a later time, so that leads us to our last person signed up, Haley Flanagan-Gurong. Apologies if I mispronounced your name.
Hello. Hi, everybody. I got here a little bit late, so I kind of missed the important part, but at least I'm here. So I live in southeast, southeast, like 35th, between Hawthorne and Division, so I'm not, I'm in the same chunk, no matter the map, but just looking it all over, I just wanted to summarize and make sure I understand correctly. So the four sections are each going to have three commissioners, which we get to vote for based on that section. I'm kind of noticing that, like, my neighborhood I grew up in when I was a kid is part of Multnomah County unincorporated, and it's still going to be unincorporated, so that's sort of a bummer, because my parents lived there, and it would be cool, they never are interested in the, or they don't know what's going on in the city politics, even though they're right there. So that's just, it would be, if there is making a new map, that would be something that would be, something to take into account. And then, just based on what I've looked at just today and everything, and hearing everyone's comments, I'm also for the Alder. I feel like it just makes the most sense to my brain. It does the Sandy on both sides, and then the river seems like it makes sense as the dividing line. Keeping Selwood, Selwood, I don't really understand, so was there not enough, like, population on the west side? Okay, so it was like, something has to go over there. Okay. Well, that Selwood person said they liked it, too, so. Okay, that's my comment.
Thank you, Haley. There are no more people signed up on our list, but that doesn't mean you cannot testify, so I'm looking around a pretty full room, and I'm going to give it a few minutes. If anyone would like to testify, feel free to walk up to the, not yet, sir. We're going to give some time for anybody who has not yet spoken or testified. Yes, ma'am, I see two hands. Feel free to come up, and just as a reminder, please state your name, your zip code, and/or your neighborhood, and if you belong to an organization. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Erica Stewart. I live in the Alphabet District, 97210. And I've been reading interviews with Commissioner Lumley, and I just don't know enough about the question around the Lloyd District, and how that's being considered in terms of it's being divided up, especially since, we don't know if Major League Baseball is going to go in there, or whatever. So can you just explain to me, if I don't have anything to testify, it's just a question for the commission about how that was taken into consideration with drawing the maps?
Thank you, ma'am. We wrote your question down, and after we officially close public testimony, we'll go through the questions that were posed. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Bonnie Keeling. I live in the Hollywood District, which I guess, in a way, is a combination of south and north. I wasn't planning to speak, so I just wanted, but something was coming up for me that I thought I would just toss out, which is, I kind of wish we had different words than divide and boundaries and so on. Because when I first looked at the maps, I thought, oh, good, we're going to have some blending. Since I've lived back in Portland over 10 years now, it's like that Willamette River is, you know, like, you may as well live in, you know, Antarctica practically, no matter which side you're on. You're not going to cross the river if you can help it. Is the impression I have. It's a boundary, it's a, you know, it's something you have to be willing to go past. And I'd like to see more language around the opportunity for blending communities that are different from one another, that don't have common interests necessarily, but that can get to know each other somehow through their new district definition. And I just want to just put that thought out there about, let's not divide us further, let's look at a new way of being, as our world keeps shrinking, and we keep recognizing how familiar everyone is that we see that's in other parts of the world, and including in Portland, even on our streets. So it's just my comment about language. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. I'm looking around again. It is still not too late. We better turn off the chime. Would anyone else like to testify before I officially close? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Susan Bladhome, and I'm with Frog Ferry, and the previous speaker inspired me because her reference to the river being used to divide us, I think, is a real shame here for Portland. I think the river belongs to all of us. I think it is a wonderful conduit to connect all of us, and I realize we don't necessarily have registered voters on the river, but I would love to see the river fall in one of these jurisdictions. Right now, we don't have a city council member responsible for the river. We essentially have two nonprofits that are providing the stewardship over the most vast, important green space in our community. So I know that's really out-of-the-box thinking, and I am sincerely grateful for your leadership and your commitment to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. I'm reserving a little more time. We've got plenty of it. Does anyone feel moved to testify? As a reminder, once I officially close public testimony, there won't be another opportunity, even if you're moved later to give a kind of full three-minute report. We will probably have opportunity to ask questions for a minute, but not testimony. I've been told we have to officially close it before we can take questions. Anybody else? I'm counting to seven seconds in my head. Somebody told me once you have to wait seven seconds. I don't know why. Are you okay if we officially close public testimony, commissioners? All right. We are closing public testimony. Thank you so much for everyone who got up to speak. It looks like there is time to take questions. We have been tracking questions that were provided when people came up and testified. So we're going to start with those questions first. And then if there are additional people who would like to come up and ask another question, we'll give you a minute or so to do that. So commissioners, we're going to start with a question that came from Pat. Why is the southeast the only communities being divided into the west district? I believe is the question. Additionally, what about the Lloyd District or St. John's? Which one of you would like to answer that?
Do you want me to do it, or somebody else want to do it?
So, first of all, thank you very much for your public comments. Really appreciate it. I think every commissioner here, and those who cannot be here. Sorry. Thank you. Thank you very much for your public comments and coming this evening. I think every commissioner here recognizes that this is the most valuable aspects of the work that we're trying to do now, is to hear from you, the worst. So we really do appreciate the comments that you're sharing. We, if, just thinking about, and I think it's important as we talk about these maps, that we highlight the convergence that happened with the maps, right? And why they look the way they do. We had over, as Commissioner Lumley said, we had over 200 maps submitted. We had additional public commentary, and each of us had the opportunity to use multiple tools to develop maps. And when you look at any particular map, it's actually, again, the convergence and the consolidation of a lot of feedback that resulted in these, what we're calling drafts, right? And they actually came out, there's some commentary about why they look so similar. It's because when you start looking at the neighborhood divisions, you start looking at the ethnic minorities and where they're living and the groupings, and you build these maps repeatedly, they do start to look very similar. And we wanted to present to the community the most, again, the convergence of all that data that we had, and to get the subjective feedback around where the boundaries need to exist, what changes need to take place. And so, you know, we've had, this is our fifth community engagement, and we've heard a lot of the commentaries about why those, why does that map look the way they do? Could you have considered other things? And we did, we considered a lot. We considered horizontal lines, and there are some challenges with that. And so it's important to really keep in mind the requirements that Commissioner Lumley talked about. So compactness, continuity, contiguousness. We talked about equal population. Those are very rigid requirements that the voters left us with to work within that format. And so if you look at these maps, and without looking at, just think about Portland in general. Where is the densest population in Portland? If you had to guess about where that would be?
Gresham.
Gresham? Okay. So far east, right? Got you. Where else? Where else? Any guesses?
Southeast.
Southeast. Got you. So the inner southeast area, right? Got you. So what's important to think about, like, in each one of these maps, that sort of teal area is the smallest, right? Well, it's small because it is actually the most dense. It's the most dense in terms of population because of the, it has some of the lowest public use, land use than any of the other districts. So if you think about what's along the Columbia River, majority of that is the airport. And then in the west, the west side of that northern piece, around the St. John area, before you get to the St. John area, there's runoff and reserves there. You cross the Willamette and hit that northern side of the west side, and you're in Forest Park, which isn't very densely populated at all, right? So the densest population west of the river is actually downtown and south, right? And so that creates a dynamic where, again, after looking at all the other convergences and data sets that we use, that you have to cross, in order to meet the requirement of equal population and compactness, you have to cross the river at some point. So there were some comments raised around, you know, do you jump over St. John? That's legitimate, and it's worth. We had some discussion amongst the commissioners and before we voted. And that was an option. We, and we said at the time that the community had spoken and wanted to keep the northern communities together. So then that left crossing the river in the central business area, and then further south into the Sellwood, Eastmoreland area. And so, and then, again, if you go to the outer east, you've got a lot of industrial areas out there as well. So it leaves that very, that teal area, that south central area, to be very densely populated. So configurations then of how to actually draw the maps within the requirements become very constrained at that point, right? And so, as, and it's important also to, and I want to, there was a comment made around, and I wanted to really appreciate this comment. There was a comment made around the language that we use as we're talking about these maps, where you're talking about dividing lines and boundaries as opposed to blending communities and creating alignments. And that's, if we think about what's happening now in Portland with creating these voting districts, well, there isn't an objective to create literally maps. But what commissioners are, and the community efforts are, is really map relationships. What are the relationships between your home, your community, and the community you're next to? How far out does your common interest radiate? And how do we create that blending so that we are at the same time mapping those relationships and how they extend, and doing that work of enfrancisement, doing that work of representation, doing that work of trying to do this in the most equitable way possible, and then at the same time focusing and centering on voices that have not been included in decision-making previously. So it's a monumental task, which is, I think the voters in November understood this and thought intentionally about how to do this in ways. And it's, but the act of doing it is where these discussions are necessary, they have to take place. And so we do appreciate all the commentary. So I hope that helps put into context some of the shaping that you see in these maps, and why they converge, and they look very similar in some ways, but also highlight that your input is necessary to provide the subjective feedback that we need to create those distinct communities. Last thing before I finish, and I'll finish, is that as we talk about the notion of enfrancisement and representation, I think as we take in all this feedback, we're going to have to go back in August and assemble all this and keep this in mind. But I think the charter commission, as they thought about this, recognized that you're going to need, in terms of representation, at least three per district. Now, what does that mean? That provides an opportunity, if we do this in the right way, that those common interests, those areas of common interests, even within any particular district, there's an opportunity for that, those areas of common interest to support a candidate to be elected. And so what we understand is that the size, for example, if you have to cross the river, let's not unintentionally and inadvertently disenfranchise communities by not creating a large enough, a weighted enough, community to pull over to the west side, that they don't have a voice, right? So those things are the type of things that we're considering, and we appreciate your patience and your feedback as we go through this very thoughtful and intentional process.
Thank you, Commissioner Judd. Anyone else? Commissioner Lumley?
Thank you, Commissioner Judd, for that explanation. During the months of April and May, we explored communities of common interest. Couldn't hear me? Better? During the months of April and May, the commission explored communities of common interest. And we heard from community leaders from throughout the whole city. And for the north and northeast area, we'd heard from the African-American community that they really wanted to keep north and northeast whole. That's primarily the reason there. That said, these maps that we presented to you are map examples to solicit your input. And when we vote in August, we may or may not vote on these specific maps. We might change one. We might change into something entirely different. It really depends on the input we're getting from folks like you. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to provide comment? Commissioner Monhadas?
Can you hear me? Okay. Just right on it. I appreciate the question about the east side because I think one thing to keep in mind is, you know, we're a citizen commission. We bring different perspectives, and it's a difficult process for folks to engage in. And we had a lot of engagement early on, and so those did do a lot to inform those original maps. If we did pull, if we did split up the west side, it would look sort of like a shoehorn going across, it would basically split somewhere around Burnside, around downtown. So actually, as we're sitting in this community meeting right now, if we were to split the west side in a north-south boundary, I would actually be curious to hear from folks in this room, if you do live in the area, what that should look like. So I'm just putting it out there as food for thought, as someone who did not necessarily support keeping a full west side and a river crossing. So I just think that's important context for us to have, and this won't be the only opportunity to do that. But if we are going to bring other drafts and options to consider, that's going to be critical feedback because nobody's, again, there's, we've talked a lot about there not being a perfect map. But I think, again, it's what I'm most curious to hear about, and I really appreciate the last comment that was made, is who folks want to be aligned with versus, I'm supporting this map because it doesn't touch me, so you should throw them under the bus. Like, that's not really as interesting to me. And I felt like, even when we were on the east side, it was like, well, I'm an east sider, so you should support that map. Like, the feedback is taken, but it's a little less persuasive to me. But I feel like we started this conversation in this hearing with folks saying, well, I'm, you know, in Sellwood, and I want to be with those folks. And so I thought that was really compelling, and just want to give appreciation for folks who are looking at who they want to be aligned with, because I think it does speak to the values that were elevated towards the end of the conversation.
Commissioners, are you ready to move to the next question? Can I use my microphone? Of course. Commissioner Van Sekel-Robins?
So, hi, welcome, everybody. I just wanted to say that one of the things that Commissioner Lumley talked about is all the data sets that we've looked at, that we've overlaid on the map of the city. And one of the things that we've looked at is high school enrollment areas. I just wanted to point out that the three neighborhoods that are on the maps that are north of I-84, out on the eastern edge of the east side, and those are all, those three neighborhoods all feed into McDaniel's, which is south of 84. And the question came up about St. John's and Linton. I actually grew up in St. John's and lived on Savvy Island, too, and drove through Linton every day. And those are in two different, St. John's is in Roosevelt High School and all the grade schools there. Linton actually goes up to Skyline to grade school and to Lincoln, to high school. And there's a long history of tension about the decisions that Portland Public Schools has made about those two communities and where they go to school. So that's just one thing to keep in mind. And we're going to be going to North Portland tomorrow and Saturday to listen to folks from North Portland on this. The other thing that I just wanted to say is, it's come up a couple times about the shared interest in the river, for instance. Susan talked about who cares about the river in terms of council? Who cares about the area in the inner east side and where OMSI is going to do development? And we've had conversations and have heard from community members about whether or not it's better to have that all consolidated in a single district with three counselors who might be focused on it versus having it collectively move across multiple districts where you could end up with nine, with respect to the central city, nine counselors that all have constituent interest in the health of that area.
Thank you, commissioners. We have a couple more questions that I want to get to. If you're, you know, thinking of questions that you would like to ask, feel free to start queuing up in front of the microphone. The next question is, how are unincorporated areas factored into drawing the four districts?
I'm not sure what's behind me on the screen, but, you know, it's up there. You see that little white spot? That's unincorporated Maywood Park, so it's, isn't included. And so I don't think if there's an area adjacent to the city boundary that is unincorporated with the city, Portland would be included in the maps. Population is just not included. Still can't hear me, yeah? Okay. Do you want me to repeat that, or? Okay. As my mom would say, Paul, use your outdoor voice. I don't have an outdoor voice. So that white spot in the middle of the map, that's Maywood Park, and that's unincorporated. And so it's not included in the population with the maps. And so if there is an area adjacent to the city of Portland that is also unincorporated, they just would not be included, unfortunately.
Thank you, Commissioner. Last question on our list is, how are future plans with the Lloyd District being considered in drawing of the three maps?
At this time, they're not included. Earlier on, when I was giving a presentation, I mentioned that that was a question we were asked early on about the future of certain areas, and we are required to deal with the population that we have right now, not necessarily plans in the future. Although there, I have read the news article about a baseball field being contemplated, but that's just a proposal, and it's not something that would be, at this point in our process, a consideration in how we draw maps. But I welcome the comments of other commissioners as well.
That concludes the questions that we track during testimony. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to ask the commissioners an additional question? Yes, sir.
So during the testimony, I heard three people, it sounded like three people who lived in the Sellwood area. Two of them said it would be great to be part of the west side district, and one person said it would be terrible. People I've talked to have said that it would be a very, that they don't want to do it. But on the other hand, you know, if that's what people there want, that, you know, I'd personally be open to that. So my question is, are you planning to do any kind of polling, or is there any way you can get kind of a more official sense or more accurate sense of what people in those, in that, say, for example, in the southeast part of the Alder map that would go over to the west side, of what those people want? Do you have any sense of that, or is it just kind of what people show up and say individually, and kind of your sense from, I don't know, from whatever? So how are you thinking about doing this, making a decision like this perhaps based on a little bit of data? Thank you.
Which Commissioner? Commissioner Hanson?
I'm happy to take a first stab at that. I mean, I think you raise such a good point about how this is an art and not a science. I will say a few, and we're, we as a commission are really trying to get as much feedback from as many folks as possible, and then it'll be our job, after this whole public comment period, to really zoom out and look holistically at what we have heard, not just in public hearings, but in all of the other ways that people can submit feedback. And then also thinking about who we are hearing from and who we have not yet heard from, right? Because the folks who choose to show up and/or email and/or anything, like, there's a, like a very, you know, it's a type of person who wants to show up and give feedback, and so who, whose voices are we, have we heard, and whose have not we heard? So that's all stuff that we will definitely be taking into consideration. I will say, for folks in this room, if you are not, if you did not stand up and give public comment, or public testimony, rather, we have some opportunities to share, like a gut check of that exact question in the back of the room on this column here. We have an opportunity for you to actually take a sticker and do like a straw poll here for if it were up to you, would you support Alder, Cedar, Maple, or none of the above, something else? And then we also have some prompts around looking at the maps, I like, I wish, and what if, if you wanted to take a post-it and just share a brief note, if you're someone who processes a little slower or doesn't want to stand at the mic. So we're taking that question very seriously of how are we inviting information and, like, really intentionally from whom? And then how will we look at all of that holistically to see? So, thank you. Anyone else want to add anything?
Yes, sir.
Hello, everybody. Thank you very much for taking a question-answer time. I didn't realize that was going to happen, but I will avail myself of that opportunity. We're here today, and I think it's also in your report, that the Alder map, which takes Sellwood and Eastmoreland, as well as, I think, a couple other places, Sellwood-Morland, into the same voting district as the west side. And that was based on, as I understood it, some demographics. I did go on the virtual map tour that was on there, trying to figure out, play with that, and what the demographics might mean. that and what the demographics might mean. But what are the demographics that were looked at in order to kind of bring those areas into the west side? Thank you.
Can you state your name, please?
Oh, my name is Vadim Mazursky and I live in Goose Hollow.
Sorry, just to make sure we understand the question. So the question is, what, what data sets, or are you asking with demographics?
Both. So, you know, we were told that the Alder map, excuse me, the Maple map is with the city's 2035 plan and therefore it makes sense from a, perhaps a business standpoint or development standpoint, more bridges or something like that as well, some people are saying. And I kind of understand that, I can look at the 2035 map. But for the Maple map, I'm sorry, for the Alder map, it said that demographics were an important aspect of that. And I'm wondering what, what the demographics were that were looked at to make it more compatible, perhaps, with the west side and where one would actually find those demographics, because I didn't see that on the mapping tool.
And so, that's, you've heard this evening, some of the public comments around the socioeconomic similarities between Sellwood and East Moreland and the west side. That feedback, as well as looking at the data, I think someone mentioned the housing prices, the similarities between having college professors living in both of those environments, that qualitative information informed, as well, informed the mapping, as well as, again, this overarching need to extend the map at some point from the west side across the river. Does that help?
And I would just add to that, that on the website, there is, it's an ArcGIS tool where you can overlay these three maps as well as kind of anything that you can dream of. We've got socioeconomic data, percentage of renters versus owners, racial and ethnic demographic information, voter, I believe there's voter turnout rates in there, there's all sorts of demographic information and you can, like, toggle it all on and off, neighborhood boundaries, things like that.
Thank you. And that's kind of what I was getting at. There's a lot of data out there and I'm, I see just the demographics as being, so socioeconomic is one of them, housing price is one of them. I want to say, I live in Goose Hollow, which is mainly renters, some condos, very few houses, one of the lowest median income in the west side altogether. So, I'm trying to understand for the purposes of, like, Goose Hollow, Old Town, some of these areas that are, and downtown, in fact, high renters, high Section 8, high, low-income housing as well, what, what the nexus is with, you know, say, East Moreland, which has mansions and things like that. But I, I'll take a look at the socioeconomics, the Arcs map has that. Is there anything besides socioeconomic and housing prices?
I think it's also important, again, looking at the criteria, because it has to be compact and contiguous, right? So it's not like we could have skipped over and gone further east without touching, again, as we've been talking about, along the river, because it's such a dramatic geographic barrier within the city. And we're knowing that on the, to the west of the river, it's just not enough population density there to support it, you've got to come across at some point. And so, again, if it wasn't for the, those things we mentioned, plus the geographical location of it being right next to the river, different decisions could be made, but because of the criteria of being contiguous, compact, and you say, okay, well, look, and you've heard the discussion this evening, if you go further north, how similar are the renters in the, on the east side of the river versus the west side of the river? We've heard public comments that there isn't any similarities, right? There was a gentleman who was going to tend at least two community engagement sessions and provided public testimony, who agrees that, like, there's no similarities between Sellwood and East Moreland and the west side. And so, it's hard for us to say that, like, there was a, one set of criteria, or one set of data set that helped, that made the decision. Right now, the decision hasn't been made, these are options that we're looking at, and given the criteria, the options, and the public testament and some similarities that were, that were made obvious, it's why you see crossing the river either at the center or Sellwood, East Moreland.
Thank you. Commissioner Fleishman, followed by Commissioner Monhaddas.
Apologies in advance if anything I say just duplicates something you've heard in our other responses, but I did want to emphasize a few things. First is, this is, this is a deliberative process of 13 commissioners looking at lots of data. That data, that's first thing. So it's not just one piece of data. The second is, is that we had an opportunity to look at an overlay of lots of different data, including kind of geographic data about school attendance zones, as an example. I appreciate Vadim's question, pointing out that demographically, there are parts of the west side that are concentrations of low-income residents, something that is often overlooked in the conversation around west and east, kind of saying the west, the west is the wealthy area, so on and so forth. So, we did look at that and we looked at the maps that allow us to do this and, and for each one of the maps that, that we're looking at, for every single map, in fact, of the 200 or so, you can, there's also an opportunity to see demographics that are associated with each one of those maps. So it really was deliberating. So, for example, for each one of the maps that we're currently looking at, that will form kind of the basis for our ongoing deliberation, we have breakdown in terms of race, ethnicity, and we can consider a variety of other factors. So, I just want to kind of take that opportunity to emphasize that there's lots that goes into taking a look at this and it's no single factor. In fact, we did not prioritize any one of the criteria, so it's a very holistic process. And appreciate everybody pointing out one piece of it, so that we can, again, when we go back to consider this, again, fold in everything that we've heard over the last few weeks in our ongoing deliberations.
Can folks hear me? Great. I would just, I'll build on what folks have said already. I think that was a really great way to frame it around the multiple data sets that were used to inform these maps and the multiple perspectives that are at play. I do think in starting that, a good place to start is with the criteria, because there are, there is very specific criteria that is driving each of these maps. And so, there's not one data set that we're looking at for each map. There's multiple, multiple data sets that support multiple criteria that are listed out and that were approved by the voters. And so, that, I did want to say, in response to the comment about the Maple map and the 2030 plan, that the 2030 plan is not a criteria and it's also not necessarily a data set to support the criteria. One of the criteria are communities of common interest. And as was stated in the presentation as we were getting started, a community of common interest can be a community that has a similar policy concern. So, I will say as one Commissioner on this panel, one of 13, something that I have yet to hear from are the folks who have a policy interest in that 2030 plan. I think there are definitely folks who have financial interests in many of the different plans and many of the different development projects. I think there are folks who have advocated for some of the policies and strategies that were included in those plans and that's absolutely fair game as a community of common interest. But in terms of bringing back a data point that's going to tie into and align with the criteria, I would actually be curious to hear from those communities of common interest in that context and feel a little uncomfortable with naming specific development plans in any of these contexts as a specific criteria, because it's not. And so I just wanted to be explicit about that and I don't know if I'm speaking for others in saying that, but just wanted to put it on the record.
Commissioner Siegel.
We need to get wireless mics. The, you know, we're here to listen to you all rather than to listen to ourselves, Yak. And so, I do have a couple comments, but I'm going to, if anyone else has a comment that they want to make, I just assume, hear from you first and then make a comment. And I see one. So how do you want to play this, facilitator?
Can I make just a quick comment?
Well, I listened to the Commissioners. So Commissioner Lumley would like to make a comment and then maybe we, it looks like there's at least one person who would like to ask a question?
Yeah. Mine is actually along the same lines. Can you hear me now? Okay. One of mine is actually, my comment is on the same lines, that we are presenting these map options to solicit input from you all. We're not here to defend any one particular map. They are, they were developed based on different kinds of data sets and criteria and influences from folks like you. Thank you.
Ma'am, would you like to come up, state your name and ask your question?
Susan Lindsay. I'm the co-chair of the Buckman Community Association. And I came to make comment, but I got here too late. I got off work a little late tonight, so. But I do have a question, because I've been to another hearing and I wanted to know if you would consider changing your introductory narrative about the Cedar map to emphasize, to shift the emphasis about, kind of the positive, about how it keeps the central east side industrial district together, which is just a zoning overlay, and point out the fact that it divides several neighborhoods. I mean, one of the really important goals has been to keep neighborhoods together and keep communities of common interest together. And the Cedar map does exactly the opposite of that. So I'm, but I keep listening to the introduction of it and it, and it leaves out, it omits the fact that what it does is it takes the Buckman neighborhood, the Kearns neighborhood, the Hospital, Abernathy neighborhood, and more, and cuts them in half. So that's question number one. If you would consider kind of updating the narrative to make it more authentic. And then the other question I have has to do with the Maple map, because I've heard very clearly that you did important outreach to north-northeast Portland, because of course they are part of the central city, right? And you did that and you said, okay, based on the feedback that we've had, we're not going to include this. But I'm not aware of the outreach that you did for inner southeast Portland and to check in with us. I'm still unaware of any of the many renters that are in the Buckman neighborhood who are very different from the renters in the Pearl District, of signing on to wanting to be represented by the entire west side. So I just want to know, what kind of outreach did you do that you clearly did in north Portland, that you clearly did in east Portland, that you were clearly conscious about, that seems to have not taken place in inner southeast? Because I think I would have been aware of it and I think I would have been involved in it and I certainly wouldn't, would have gotten a lot of people to engage with it. So those are my two questions. Would you change the narrative, please, to make it more accurate? And would you let me know about what you did in inner southeast that made you think it was okay to lump this population into the entire west side? Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. So two questions at the table. Let's, let's take it one at a time. So would you consider updating the introductory description on Cedar map?
So answer to question number one is yes. Actually, in my opening remarks tonight, I mentioned for that, that it does split the Buckman neighborhood, per your feedback in the previous hearing, so thank you. I will, and we'll make sure that the, like, default language has that as well. Thank you.
Well, easy breezy. Okay, second question. Did you do similar outreach with inner southeast as you did in north and northeast Portland?
Well, I think there's going to be more outreach in the inner southeast coming up, but the work that we were doing early on was focusing on communities of color and of common interest and other communities as well. We did not, in my, to my knowledge, do a specific round of meetings or invite people from the inner southeast, to my recollection. Is that correct? Okay.
And if I could just add one comment, I think we talked in the previous question about the demographic overlays in that map. And a lot of our conversation around the development of the Maple map had to do with kind of frankly purely looking at demographic, purely looking at the, at the overlays of kind of densely populated areas with a lot of renters. And when you look at just that overlay on a map, it sure as heck looks like inner southeast has a lot in common with high-renter areas on the west side of the river. And so I think that's also actually a really great example of how we can look at data and we take data very seriously, and also voices of people in these places about their lived experience of place and space is just as important as a piece of the puzzle. And so we're grateful, like, truly grateful for all of the, all of the comments and all of the folks who are showing up, because again, it adds that additional dimension to, you know, it's, it's not just the numbers, it's about how we think of ourselves and our communities.
Okay, to reserve more time for testimony, as per instructed by Commissioner Siegel, Commissioner Fleishman would like to make another comment. Is that okay, Commissioner Lumley?
That's fine, but I'm going to go back again anyway, though.
You're charged.
Commissioner Siegel has said it's okay for me to say this. I checked with him. So I want to go back to, this is, we've had an ongoing series of meetings as a commission. We've had a number of public hearings now, but I want to step back and kind of, if there was a timeline of the process, we've invited public comment there, but also working with the city, we've sent out mailers and a lot of information to neighborhood associations and a long list of other civic associations and others that might be interested in our deliberations. So, we continue to welcome feedback, but I wouldn't want to leave the impression that we kind of selectively decided to reach out to certain organizations and not others, or certain neighborhoods and not others. We had a broad-scale outreach. There was a plan that we developed so that we could maximize inclusiveness of feedback across the city. So, I want to recognize that it, it, as all outreach efforts, are often imperfect and also to say that one of the ways we try to deal with it is to do things like hold this public hearing to make sure that if we missed any voice or any point of view, that we will hear it at this point.
Commissioner Lumley, of course.
Thank you. I do want to appreciate your comment earlier about neighborhood associations and while it's not specifically one of the criteria that we have to work with, it's been very clear throughout this process that neighborhood, district boundaries are really important. And we've heard that at all of our meetings and all of our public hearings. Clearly, the, we couldn't decide as a commission how to treat the inner southeast and so we developed these three map options that show three very different examples to solicit public input. And so I would say over these, this two-week period, most of our comments are, are on the inner southeast. We're also getting additional comments on the northern boundary and how to treat Sandy Boulevard, for example, but most of the input we're getting is specifically from neighborhood districts and also, or associations, excuse me, and also how to treat the inner southeast. So it's all been very good and very educational and I really want to thank you for your comments.
So as you've heard from multiple Commissioners tonight, they are here to hear from you. So I'm looking around, is there any final questions for this commission before we start to wrap up this evening? I see two. This gentleman hasn't spoken yet. If you want to come up, sir, state your name and your question, please. As a reminder, public testimony has closed, so this is question only.
I'm Arnold Vinard. I live downtown and I appreciate that you need a map and it's worth getting the map right. And my humble opinion is, and I'm curious on your reaction, it doesn't make much difference. The reason it might not make a lot of difference, a commissioner, if three people do a district, all you got to do is land in the top three, you could appeal to a very specific audience fairly intensively and get the job, win the election. With that system, the map is not quite as important and I'm curious who's going to disagree with me or illuminate that topic. going to disagree with me, or illuminate that topic.
Thank you for your comments, sir. It seems to be out of context for what we're in charge of doing. We're in charge of developing the map, and not really trying to influence how people get elected. And I can't remember, did you state your name? I can't remember.
Arnold Vennard.
Thank you very much.
Downtown.
Thank you, sir. I saw one other person with their hand up to ask a question. All the person with the cutie patootie pie.
Hi. So my question is just, again, you kind of explained about the unincorporated. The area that I'm thinking of is in southwest, souther, like Riverdale area. And I'm curious if that's just like outside of the boundaries of what's being talked about, because it seems like that would, if you use that portion, then that would, that would give you a lot more population, or whatever. Yeah. Like, is there, is that not going to be considered? Is that?
Yeah. I'm not quite sure where Riverdale is, but I just got confirmation that it is outside the city of Portland, and so it would not be included, unfortunately.
It doesn't have a city. So like, it doesn't have anyone, I don't know. I just think that, I went to Riverdale, and I know they have all their, like, special, whatever, they have their own school district, and maybe they wouldn't want to be part of the city of Portland. But I just think it would be really helpful to have that portion of the ci, they're part of the city, but they're not included in the city. So I don't know if we would have to have some other referendum in order to have that happen.
Thank you, ma'am.
There's a history of parts that were once outside of Portland that became incorporated into Portland, and so that would be their business.
Right. So probably not until after 2030?
They could take it up on their own time, I would, whenever that is, I would assume.
I guess so.
I'm going to provide last call for anyone who has not had an opportunity to speak tonight, or ask a question. I want to make sure that anybody who has not spoken today has an opportunity before we wrap up for the evening. Last call. Seven seconds. I get lost around five. Just kidding. Okay, everyone, I think we are going to wrap up our time together today, which means it's time on the agenda to turn it over to closing remarks to the commissioners. And so, we don't really have a plan for this part, so I'm looking down the table to anyone who would like to provide comment. And I see Commissioner Siegel has indicated he'd like to go first. Commissioner Siegel.
Because I so graciously yielded my time to all of you. Because, again, that's the most important thing, and that's why you're spending your time here, and we're spending our time here. After, after over 40 years of working for local governments, I can assure you that, after I feed a guide dog puppy here, that nothing, nothing is more important than listening to the opinions of those that are governed by the city that we're in. And so we really do sincerely appreciate all the time that you took. You know, we were out in southwest on Sunday, and it was, what, 82, 83 degrees and sunny? And, what, we had over 40 people, I believe? 50-ish? That's pretty amazing. And so it means a lot to you, and it means a lot to us. A couple real quick summary questions. I also want to address that specific development plans were not considered, and will not be considered, in our deliberations. That's not among the criteria we have, and we won't be doing that. Those of us who were thinking about, and we're allowed to have thoughts, the very long-involved, hard-fought, and public policy efforts, like the Central City 2035 plan, or the East Portland plan, those were each years in the making. And it also involved years' worth of public engagement, and listening to people like yourself, in helping to inform the public policy that was then adopted into law, that governs and shapes, or informs decisions that will have a difference for years to come, in both the Central City and East Portland. You can't ignore those folks, and we're not. But they are not among the key criteria that we're looking at, and I just want to make that very clear. As Mr. Fleishman mentioned, we used information from, sorry, Commissioner Fleishman. We used information that we got from listening sessions, various means of outreach. You said, well, you haven't come talk to me. Well, I know, you meant a broader we, I get it. I'm watching the waving. And, but we also had opportunities, and still have opportunities, for various commissioners to come before certain groups, and respond to questions, and get additional input. I spoke to a group of, from the League of Women Voters yesterday, for example. We've had others that have appeared with other associations and other interests. The door is now closed on that, and there's lots of opportunities. If you'd like one, Sonia, would you wave, please? Sophia, I'm sorry, I know a Sonia. And she will help get that to happen. The other thing I wanted to mention, and it's been mentioned briefly, but these three maps are conceptual alternatives for generating comment and fleshing out questions. And they certainly are. They're doing their job. Through the hundreds of maps that were developed, and the comments received, we, as a commission, spent hours looking at, trying to find some commonalities, and key points of difference between these maps. And some thought, maybe, well, let's trot out two, and see what people think. Others thought, well, what about three? We figured you could handle three. And again, these are just to generate comments, questions, and get you thinking about how you feel, what are your communities of interest, who do you want to be with, if you will, in helping to shape decisions about the future? And we've got several more hearings to go. Please show up. Let us know. Because after July is done with, we're going to be getting together as a commission, listening to all this input, and we'll be developing a refined and final, we hope, map. We, I'm sure we all intend that we want to get this done as a commission, and not have it get tossed back to city council. If anyone disagrees with that, feel free to mention that. But, so please, keep asking questions. And if you want an opportunity for some more special attention or time, that's probably a better way to put it, please let Sophia know, and we'll get that to happen. Thanks very much.
Any other commissioners like to offer closing remarks, reflections?
Yeah, I would like to close just by expressing appreciation for all of you for making time to be here this evening. I said this at our last hearing, and I'll repeat it again here. The only experts in this room are all of you, because you know best who is in your community, what issues you face, what your needs are, and how you want to be represented. And our job, or more appropriately, our challenge for us on the commission, is how best to hold the input that you give us, alongside the data that is available to us, and the criteria that we're bound by. A lot of folks expressed appreciation for the difficulty of the task, and putting all those things together. But I want to appreciate all of you for making time to be here to be heard in this process, because it just doesn't happen without your input. So thank you all.
That's a great closing remark. I see some head nods. That feels like a great way to adjourn. I want to thank our interpreters. I want to thank our fabulous technical partners who kept the sound on. And I want to thank the staff who helped put this all together. And of course, thanks to all of you for coming tonight. This meeting is officially adjourned, so please enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you.